Let's uh.
The meeting to order.
Time the secretary tonight again. Seven o'clock, I mean five o'clock.
The pledge is the next agenda item.
Okay, let's say the pledge of allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Okay, now, updating on reopening, I believe, is the next.
For the approval of the agenda.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
What's next?
Reopening discussion and possible action.
Charles, I'll turn it over to you. Well, I'm gonna mute and sneeze.
All right, um, is Russ Melmed on? Did he, did he jump in? See Russ in there anywhere? Okay, so Russ was, was going, going to join us, and I just wanted to make sure, but he's not there. He's, um, the best reason of all, he might be a little late or joining us momentarily, is he's, he's running a vaccine clinic today. So that's right where we want our director of health to be, is putting vaccine in people's arms. So Russ is, is gonna join us hopefully momentarily, and, and he can give us an update on the data. So before I, I, I give you guys an update and a revised recommendation, I kind of, I feel compelled. I just wanna make a few comments, if you'll indulge me, and this is as much for, for the board as it is for everybody, buddy who's watching. So I think it's, it's, it's fair to say that, that at this point, collectively, we as Americans are pretty much on the brink of a nervous breakdown. Right? I mean, I think I talked last time at a board meeting about maybe the darkest before the dawn moment being a few weeks ago. I think it's right now, right? Um, you know, over the past forty-eight hours since, since we got together Tuesday night, you know, I, I've been pretty much inundated with emails and communications. And I just want anybody who is hearing the sound of my voice, and I think I speak for the board, to say that none of us want to be remote learning. That we all want to be in-person learning. That is not about what, what we, what we want for, for our kids. We all wanna be here. And, and I'm just gonna, gonna take a moment without pointing any fingers to, to remind everybody that, that one of the, the goals we committed to this year as a board and for our district was this, this concept of civil discourse. Right? And in my mind, civil discourse, when civil discourse breaks down, we see what we saw yesterday afternoon. Right? That's the inevitable result when, when civil discourse reaches a point where we're not listening to each other anymore and we're not communicating well. And, and we can't go there, right? We, we have to listen to each other. We have to be respectful. We, we have to understand. And, and we have to respect when anybody comes to us and says, "I'm scared. We're in a pandemic and I'm terrified. I, I, I don't wanna get sick. I, I don't want, I don't want to get my kids sick. I, I don't want to get my family sick." How can we not hear that and say, "I hear you. I understand you. I, I am aware of what you are saying and I respect your position." And, and not feel like the person who's trying to communicate that to us is, you know, being anything but intellectually honest and should not be silenced, but needs to be heard. Right? Some of the, the communications I've, I've had over the, the past few days, I didn't get that sense out of them. Right? And I love Portland teachers. They're wonderful. And they've, they've got to, to say, speak their truth. Right? And, and we have to hear that. And, and I think that what, by, by hearing that on Tuesday night, I, I think this board did the right thing. I think you heard. I think you listened to the right people. And, and yeah, this isn't, this isn't what any of us want, but as leaders, we've gotta hear. We've gotta be responsive. We've gotta reflect the wishes of, of the community that, that we serve. And we've gotta model civil discourse. So the, the one thing I'll implore anybody who's hearing the sound of my voice, that the, the decisions that, the recommendations I make tonight and the potential decisions and votes you take tonight, understand that, that this is, if there was an easy answer to any of this, we would've found it already. And, and we're trying to do the right thing in very complicated, difficult circumstances. And i- if you disagree, that's fine, but please, let, let's be civil about that. Let, let's, let's, let's model the type of behavior that doesn't lead to the things we saw yesterday in Washington DC. There's, we, we have a lot of work to do as, as a nation, as healing. And, and frankly, we have a lot of work to do in Portland now, healing and getting back together, both physically with vaccines. But, you know, we, we've gotta start trusting each other and listening to each other and, and, and making that a, a focus of our, of our efforts. So I'll get off my soapbox now, and if anybody has any comments on the board, I'd love to hear them to that, to that end.
I have something I wanna say because I spent a lot of time thinking about and reading all the emails as well. And one of the things I went through today and yesterday and also in the weeks before during COVID's vacation was looking at what our policies are, looking at the framework and the guiding principles that we use when we open enclosed schools, when we make decisions. None of us were elected to be rubber stamped board members. Each one of us brings a lot of talent and, and, and a brain and, and information-seeking. And we try to make decisions based on the best for everybody. But one of the things that I discovered in all the policies that I'm aware of and the framework for reopening schools from the state and the framework that we used to reopen Portland schools, the first, the first guidance is that safeguarding the health and safety of students and staff. Before we educate, we have to ensure that people are safe and that the learning environment is conducive to learning. People aren't gonna learn if they're not safe. And people are not gonna learn when there's anxiety and all of the things that go on. So I would just remind people that, you know, none of us like the decisions that sometimes we're gonna have to make. And they may not be popular, but none of us are gonna make decisions that would impair the safety of our, our, our children, our precious cargo that we have and also the teachers and the, and the people who work behind the scenes. So I feel my vote the other night was not against Charles as much as it was to get more data, which we now have. And it's more current. And I feel very comfortable going forward tonight. So thank you for listening to my soapbox.
Okay.
I have just a couple additional comments to make as well. And, and one is just to remind, just as we do at our regular meetings, this is a special meeting, so there will not be any audience of citizens tonight. But just like at our regular meetings, when we do have an audience of citizens, the board doesn't respond directly to any one comment or engage in a discussion. The same is true of the emails. I want the, whoever took the time to send an email to the board to know that we appreciate your input. We've read it. We've listened to it. We've considered it. But you're not gonna get a personal response necessarily from the board. The board does its business in public at these meetings. And that's how, that's how we do our business. We're not gonna engage in, in a private back and forth in responding to emails from the public while we do welcome them. And I must, I have to say again, we greatly appreciate your input. That's why we're here. So I read through all of the emails as well. I agree with everything that Charles said. These are very difficult times for everybody, and everybody is having their own set of specific issues with, with what's going on. If it's trying to do the distance learning, being out of work, whatever their circumstances may be. And, and we'll all do better the more we can try to keep that in mind and approach this like every other problem in our life, trying to do the best we can for everybody involved. So anyone else on the board would like to make a comment before we get started?
I would.
Yeah, I would. Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Thanks. Um, I, I do want to say to everybody who emailed, just to reiterate what Sharon said, I read every single email. There were several emails that asked who has children in the schools. I am definitely one of them. My children are in second, fourth, and sixth grade, and we have plenty of struggles at home. Crying children, upset children, anxious children, kids that are begging for playdates, kids that wanna see friends, that wanna go to birthday parties. We have, we have all of it here, so I feel you. I, I'm, I'm right there with you. And my decision, I just want to clarify, the reason that I voted the way that I did on Tuesday night was not because that I felt schools were unsafe. It was because I truly believe that our teachers here in Portland are the life force of our schools. I, you know, I'm, I'm signed in as all three kids on Google Classroom on my phone. I'm getting notifications at midnight on Saturday nights. I'm getting notifications on New Year's Day, on Christmas Eve, with people putting lesson plans in. Our teachers are working so unbelievably hard. And so my vote was in acknowledgement of their incredibly hard work. And what I felt was, I know it's a hardship for families, but I felt that a one-week pushback was a relatively reasonable and small request. And that was the reason that I voted the way that I did. I also want to clear up, I think some people thought that Sue at Google, that, that the discourse changed once that she spoke. I want to point out that she is a resident of town as well, and she has every right to be on, on our calls. And one thing that the public was not aware of was that she was actually reading verbatim an email that she had already sent to the board. So that was not new information that we had received in that moment. And I'll just leave that at that. But oh, thank you to everybody who contacted us and emailed.
Yeah, I would say a couple of things. I mean, the, hearing some of these comments, I'm trying to process what I've just heard. I already had other things I was thinking of saying, but the, you know, essentially, we, I, I just feel as a board, we shouldn't be kinda just negotiating with the union during a board meeting about opening dates for school. And I, you know, some of the parents, and I've read all the letters from the families, and I thought they brought out some incredibly important points. And, and there was a perception, Krista talked about a perception about us, the, the optics of us voting remotely about opening schools. But then the optics of, you know, and whether it was all just an unfortunate error, you know, there's, there are people who felt like, you know, the motion to change the agenda and not have people be able to speak beforehand, and then have the superintendent present, and then have the board, you know, there was, there was a perception that maybe the board was gonna go along with the superintendent's recommendation. And then that almost immediately fell apart. And it, the first comments were, "Well, if teachers want another week, let's give them another week." I just felt that was just a level of casualness about the needs of our students that I, I found really hard to swallow. That we, you know, our first and foremost mission is educating students. And I, you know, I had a conversation earlier today, and, and part of it was talking about, well, you know, this isn't about, you know, COVID being in the, just the right spot of transmittedness and, and where we are in terms of positive tests because we're gonna be in this for a long time. And, you know, pushing school down the road, the harm it's done to the students who are, you know, in all likelihood, not gonna start on Monday now and are gonna be forced to be home, the families who are at the end of the rope, you know, I, I read some of these, and this is also, it's just been in the news as well. Depression in, in families, children being depressed. And I just, I just, it broke my heart when I saw that, you know, emotions to just say, "Well, we're just, you know, let's just give those teachers an extra week." That shouldn't be our calculation. Yes, they're our lifeblood. They're, they're how we operationalize our entire mission to educate students along with the administrators. But this just so shouldn't be about that. And it, and, and that's really what I wanna say.
All right, well.
I'd like, can I, can I make a comment to you? Uh, one thing I'd like to say, you know, I appreciate, well, first of all, I appreciate Charles, you, uh, saying that about civil discourse and kind of the moment that we're in. And also Meg reminding us of the, of the important guiding policy of why we are aboard. But most of all, I really wanna thank all the parents and actually students. There was one young man, Parker Johnson.
Parker, yeah.
And as a, as a fifth grader, to have the wherewithal to, to reach out to us shows remarkable integrity. As, as did the communications from high school students regarding this prior to the vacation. So, and with the parents, you know, I, I stayed up after the meeting and then on into yesterday, reading the emails. And again, I mean, it really, it, I, you know, it, it, it's, it's trying. You know, I, I, my, my kids are aging out of the system, and I know what it's like to have young children at home. And some of the parents, or at least a couple of them, were, were parents of children that I know personally. And I absolutely understand the suffering that is happening right now. And it's real, you know? The, the one thing I would say is that I, I was never comfortable with a one-week reopening following the return from vacation. Simply because the guiding principles that we had been given initially from the Department of Health and the, and the CDC were two weeks. In my mind, it makes a lot of sense to delay the opening by two weeks from the end of that vacation. You know, from a larger point of view, because as a board, we have to consider all the various aspects, the moving parts. And we absolutely have to consider the input of the teachers. They are important stakeholders in this system.
Can I interrupt you for a second just to let Charles know that Chatham Health is on the call now?
Oh, good.
Russ Melmed is on? Just, I didn't need to interrupt you. Continue.
No, that, thank, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, but in my mind, the adherence to the policy would, I, I would've been more supportive had we set that date for the nineteenth, let's say, after the Martin Luther King, simply because that would've given us two weeks. There's a liability issue in terms of the school district around not being able to monitor the behavior of both teachers and students during that vacation time. And I think that this is a larger issue that we need to look at in terms of safety for both students and teachers. Most, mostly though, I, I'll tell you, the lesson I've taken away from this, and the one important thing I think we all need to really pull together, especially given the events of what happened last night in Washington, is that this is a moment where we need to pull together as a community and not be pointing fingers and not be raising blame or trying to score political points. This is a time for us to support our schools, support a safe reopening in a way that can be effective and safe and healthy for everyone. And I'm on board with reopening as soon as possible, but I wanna make sure we do it the right way.
Thank you.
I think I'm the only one who hasn't had a chance to speak yet, so I, I'll try and keep it brief because I feel like I've, I could, I could reiterate a lot of what's already been said tonight. But I just, I wanted to say particularly a thank you to you, Charles, for what you said earlier. And, and particularly for speaking up for our teachers. I, I am so, I'm very grateful for all the communications that we've received from parents, both through email and another, you know, I've had phone calls and messages as well from, from parents in the community. And I can absolutely sympathize with the struggle. I also, like Lauren does, I have, I have young children in the school system. My, mine are in kindergarten and third grade. I get it. I'm, I'm living that digly as well. And I can absolutely sympathize with the anger that was in a lot of the emails at our decision. The way we left things Tuesday night was, was really hard to take for a lot of families, and I get that. And the anger is, is justified. And I'm, you know, emails expressing disappointment and disagreement with the decision are always welcome. But there were some, there were, there was a line that was crossed with, with some of the communication talking about, talking about our, the, the work that our teachers do and implying that, that, implying that our teachers don't want to be here or don't want to be doing their job. And I just, I, I wanna say so, you know, out loud, that that is just so far from the truth and far from my personal experience in, in watching our teachers work this year. And I appreciated what you said, Charles, in that line. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, look.
Are you gonna speak, Dave? Did you say anything yet, Dave?
Who?
Dave, did?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I said everything I need to say on Tuesday night. My birth, my.
If I could add one more thing, Charles, is the, so I don't, the thing about teachers and, you know, my, my thing is, I, I know a number of teachers. I've spoken to a number of teachers. The comments that came, you know, from the union president on Tuesday, I don't think well-represented the teachers in Portland. I think along the same sentiment that Laurel. I mean, there's no notion that I got from teachers that they don't wanna be here. In fact, I think that the message from the union leader was, was overstated quite a bit in terms of the numbers of teachers being representatives, not wanting to return right now. As you said, absolutely, everybody's nervous. But, um, I, I just wanna commend the teachers and say that I know that if there is that notion that these teachers don't wanna be in school, that's just not, that, that's not my understanding at all from the teachers I've spoken to. And I, and I think that the, the way that communication came across on Tuesday made it look as if that were the case. And that's, from what I can see, that's just simply not so. But, thank you.
I, I would agree with, I would, I, I think I would, would say every teacher misses their children tremendously and wants to be back with our kids. The, the cat, the rub, of course, is, is how we get there in the middle of a pandemic. But no teacher anywhere in this state or in this country, as far as I could tell, doesn't wanna be with children. That's not why we went into this profession. Nobody wants to be remote learning. We, we, we miss our kids dearly when, when we're not with them physically.
True.
So, so Russ, I, I see you're on the line. Thank you. And, and I know you're late because you're running a vaccine clinic today, and, and thank you. And please let us know when 1B people are eligible because I'll be the first in line. And, and like I said, you can, I, I just can't wait to roll up my sleeve. So, thank you.
You're assuming that superintendents are gonna be in 1D. I think they're the lowest priority group, actually. You're like, if there's a phase four, that's somewhere, I'll give you a call.
Oh, thank you. Well, maybe, maybe you could sneak me an extra one then. I'm not sure. That's, that's legal, but I, I, I thank you for all that you're doing. I, I'm sure you're exhausted, and, and I appreciate you taking some time to, to join us. Russ, I, I was just about to update everybody with the numbers that, that did update in the, in the system, literally an hour before I came here. But I, I think that the, the, the board members on Tuesday night were, were looking for more recent data, and the data that I had was about a, a week and a half old at that point. So can you just kindly give us a, a sense of, of the lay of the land from infected?
Sure. So I think what we're seeing really, can everybody hear me okay? I'm using my, my, okay, good. We're seeing what I think we could describe as the, the post-holiday surge. Wasn't inevitable. It was based on, it was always gonna be based on people's behaviors over the holidays, but I don't think it could be ignored at this point. Just in Portland, for example, we were at a rate of forty-three point eight per hundred thousand. And the most recent peek of data, which includes cases reported through the end of the calendar year, including New Year's Day, were at just a hair under sixty cases per hundred thousand. We've seen acceleration in every town in Chatham Health District except for Hebron. And it looks like there's acceleration across the state and just about every state in the country as well. So we know what it is. We've seen this pattern before. We saw this pattern emerge before Thanksgiving where a lot of people, I think, quarantined for a little while, thinking they were gonna get together. There was also not a lot of testing going on over Thanksgiving. So we saw what looked like a flattening of the curve and then an acceleration. And we saw the same thing happen now before Christmas. And it's because a lot of people weren't getting tested, and then a lot of people seemingly probably got together over the Christmas holiday. At least that's what our contact tracing is telling us. Now we're seeing acceleration, and this could be worse than it was after Thanksgiving. Because we had two back-to-back holiday seasons with everybody home from a lot of people taking vacations. So it's not good news, but it is not unexpected. We're just, both of those things are unfortunate, but true. So, I mean, that's the, that's it in a nutshell. It's a, it's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of COVID out there, and I expect it to continue for the next week or two at least, probably accelerating. And the reason why is because this most recent report, you know, if we saw a thirty-six percent increase in just Portland, and it only includes testing done through January second, I expect a lot more cases to emerge from exposures that occurred over the New Year's holiday as well in the next week's report. So, and it's not inevitable, but the data that we'll be seeing next week, basically from what's already happened as of today. So I think people getting tested this week, and we're seeing cases, we see case reports come in every day through our contact tracing system. So we're getting a picture for how many cases are coming in, not analyzing it. We only, our reports every week, but I fully expect us to see at least the same, if not slightly worse, in the next report. So there's a lot of COVID out there. And it still looks like it's really just people getting together in their homes, social gatherings. We are seeing some workplace transmission, though people just going to work and having had social exposures and then getting sick and, and exposing people at work. And so those are the chains of transmission, which came first, the chicken or the egg? It doesn't really matter. Either you picked it up at work and brought it home, or you picked it up at home and then brought it to work. That's the chain that we're seeing. And it's been like this for quite a while now, going back to really starting at the end of October. We started to see this sort of acceleration. So we're in the worst part of the pandemic. I mean, that's, I think it's pretty obvious. Gee, thanks, Russ. I'm not sugarcoating things here. I mean, I just don't wanna make it.
I don't know.
At this point, I mean, I could probably ask everybody on this call, is there anybody who doesn't know somebody in their personal or professional life yet who's had COVID-19?
Nope.
Everybody at this point knows somebody. And that's what I was saying about a month or two ago, is once we get to this part of the pandemic, it's going to have touched everybody. I mean, everybody's household or neighbor or family probably at this point has had somebody with COVID.
Can you talk a little bit? Um, I, the governor had a, a press conference at four o'clock and gave some kind of frightening information. There were fifty-seven deaths between yesterday and today in Connecticut from COVID. But they also said that the newest strain, which is more virulent, is in Connecticut now. And can you talk to what people should do if, because we won't know whether you've got the first COVID or the second COVID, what people should do if there's anything different or more severe that people should be doing to protect themselves and also to quarantine?
This is a lot you just brought into that.
I know.
One thing. So let me unpack it first. We saw fifty-seven new deaths in the last twenty-four hours. That's really bad news. What's really odd is, you know, we saw a dip in hospitalizations. I think that's probably an aberration. We're probably gonna see more hospitalizations come up. May just also be seeing many more younger people from those household chains of transmission over the holidays getting sick. So fewer people get hospitalized, the people that have been hospitalized, you know, it's just a lagging indicator death. So we may see some fatalities increase because over the month of December, saw hospitalizations increase. And now a portion of them are unfortunately ending in a fatality. Hospitalizations now have dipped a little bit. See if that continues. I'm not sure that it's going to, but it may be that when people get together and families, we're seeing more younger people get COVID-19 now. So they tend to be less likely to be hospitalized. So that may be why we're seeing many more cases and not as many hospitalizations. Again, those are lagging indicators, so I'm not sure that's, that trend will continue over the next couple of weeks. We're keeping an eye on it. So that's, that side of things. In terms of the new variant that's circulating, it's not more virulent. That's different than a new variant. It is not more virulent, so it doesn't cause more severe disease that we can tell at this point. It is about twice as contagious as the, the variant that's been predominant in the state of Connecticut and elsewhere in the world, those parts. So that's not good news if it turns out to be true. So this variant's only been looked at mostly in the UK for about a month. Only been in the United States that we've detected it for a week. I think we can all tell that the idea that we were going to test everybody coming from the UK, coming into the United States, and somehow keep that variant out was ridiculous. It was already here when we started that program. So anyway, it's here. If it becomes the predominant variant, in part to Connecticut or all of Connecticut, it's not gonna be good because it spreads much more readily. So even if it's just as virulent as the predominant variant is right now, it still means twice as many cases, perhaps, twice as many hospitalizations, and perhaps twice as many fatalities on a per-unit, per-population basis. It's a lot we don't know about it. And there's a lot I don't know about it. I'm not an expert in the new variant, so I'll end my comments there. But I expect that we could prevent it in the same ways that we prevent everything. As you can tell, just with the cases we're seeing, you're getting together in social settings, especially, people aren't wearing masks, they're sitting close together indoors, speaking loudly, you know, having fun, all the things that people do in household settings that we all enjoy and miss so much. So if that continues and we see this new variant, it'll be bad news for all of us. I think what we've heard earlier reports are that we haven't heard that the vaccines we have available to us now don't work against this new variant. It doesn't seem to be the case, but again, it's only been out there for about a month. We've still got quite a bit to learn about the new variant, whether the vaccines work. But earlier reports are that they do, but I think we'll learn quite a bit more from the UK, because they've been early, as early as us with delivering vaccine to their population. They've got quite a bit of that new variant out there. So I think we'll be paying very careful attention to reports coming out about vaccine efficacy in the face of that new variant, be paying very careful attention. So I don't want to speculate on that too much more.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Russ?
I had a question. Hi, Russ. Unfortunately, I missed the reopening committee meeting that was held earlier this week. And you talked a little bit about trends in the numbers and how that should help to inform our decision regarding going from remote back to in-person or, you know, changing the number of kids in the schools and so on. And I thought it might be helpful for the board to hear a little bit about that from you so that we can, you know, consider that as we mull over this decision again.
Well, you know, we've been in school now for quite a long time. I think we have a pretty good sense for the experience of what having COVID-19 in the community is like when you go into school. And experience is pretty clear, you can't keep COVID-19 cases out of school when you're in school. And much as we seem to try to tell everybody not to dismiss mild symptoms, people are asymptomatic for entirety of their infection in some cases, or for a couple of days at least early on, and they're capable of spreading at that point. So no, we're going to have cases in schools, and I think we know the experience when we went remote, most schools for the holidays, we're getting cases every day or nearly every day and spending quite a bit of time doing contact tracing. I expect that to continue and for there to be more cases coming into school relative to where we were before, because we have more COVID-19. And not just more COVID-19, but again, it seems like we've got a lot of COVID-19 in young people because people were spending time with their families over the holidays. So we're going to see a lot more COVID-19, much more as we have in our communities, we'll see in our schools compared to where we were about a month ago. But we know what that's going to look like. There's going to be a lot of contact tracing. There's going to be a lot of close contacts. And those close contacts are going to be told to quarantine and get tested. And when that happens, very few of those close contacts are going to end up testing positive, which is the good news. I mean, that's the good news of what we learned so far in schools is that you might have a lot of close contacts that we send home. Very few of them end up actually resulting in transmission. So it looks like our mitigation strategies work pretty well. Mask-wearing compliance is really, really good in most of our schools. Even when people are all in person, which a lot of our elementary schools have been for a long time, don't see a lot of transmission when there's even three feet of space between those young kids. So that's the good news. I think the older you get, the more likely you are to actually transmit the virus. So I know we have seen where there has been limited transmission in schools, they tended to have been in the high school setting, where we have your people, bigger bodies, breathing more air loudly and projecting it further. I think that's just allergy, fluid dynamics, really. It's just how the air moves from bigger people. Good thing is, we didn't see a lot of transmission, but when we did, it was with those older kids. So I think what you could probably expect when you go back into school is more cases coming in right now, because we've just got more COVID-19, more kids having to quarantine. That's a slightly increased risk that you'll see some limited transmission, just because we'll have more cases. Not because there's some new dynamic with COVID-19. Every case you have increases the likelihood that you will have that rare event. A rare event is still a rare event. The more opportunity you give for that rare event to happen, the more likely it is to happen. So I don't want to paint a picture like we're going to expect to see outbreaks now because we've got thirty-five more percent more COVID out there. We will see more cases, and that's just more opportunity for a rare event to happen. I still don't think we would see it happen quite often, but that's just what happens when you have more COVID-19 out there.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I do have another one. The testing that's done now for the original virus, when the second virus is in the community, will that testing result in also a positive? For instance, if I have, if I've been exposed to COVID-2, is that test that I'm going to get going to indicate positive? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. So will the new variant escape detection with the current test that we have in the market? That's your question. I think earlier reports are, the tests work just fine. New variant just has, it's a, it's a different protein on the surface. So it may, I don't know if it's going to impact the antigen tests. So the antigen tests look for the proteins on the surface of the virus itself. I don't know if the antigen test will be impacted. If there was one test that might be impacted, it would be that. You don't know that to be a fact. I'm just speculating. The PCR that looks for genetic material, the viral RNA, I don't expect those to have any problems. I haven't heard that they're having any problems. UK has seen plenty of COVID-19 with testing, and they have a lot of that variant out right now. So I've not heard that they have been impacted. So I don't want to say for sure, they're fine, but I've not heard that that's a problem.
Okay. The only thing that I heard today from the governor's office and the woman from the health department was that they're not doing any genome testing on the second variant. So if you are diagnosed with a positive test, assume the worst and, you know, follow the guidelines for quarantining right to the limit. Don't.
Absolutely. When you've got something that's more infectious and you don't know that that's what you've got, because the disease is basically the same, emphasis really needs to be on those public health recommendations of quarantine, isolation, testing of close contacts. Because if it's more infectious, then you're more likely to spread it to other close contacts, especially in a household setting where you're spending a lot of time. So isolating away in your household from everybody else is really important. And we emphasize that a lot. I can tell you anecdotally, many people, hey, they're going to do it, and then they don't. Then we find their household clusters. We've all heard those things, and there are some people who are just incapable of doing that. Everybody has a spare bedroom and a separate bathroom. That's just reality. There are many families where kids, for example, share a bedroom, you know. So everybody can follow those public health recommendations. And in those circumstances, in schools anyway, what we've seen is chains of transmission in households that keep siblings out of school for a very long time. You know, you have mom gets it, the kids are quarantining, but they can't isolate from mom. Then a week later, dad gets it. That's another exposure. The kids can't come back for another two weeks. One of the siblings gets it, and that's another exposure. So if we end up with this new variant, we probably see quite a bit more of that. Until they start looking more for it, not going to know. And those genome sequencing that they're doing, it takes quite a bit of time to take the sample from the person, test it for COVID, identify COVID, send it to a lab for genome testing. I don't know what the capacity is to do that. They're clearly not going to be doing it for every sample they get. So it's really just surveillance or sentinel testing, if you will, looking to find where it is. Sentinel testing, so for every hundred tests you do in Portland, pick one and do genome sequencing on it. So then you know it's in Portland, right? And then do again every hundred, and if you see two and then four and then eight out of the hundred that you do every couple of weeks, then you know it's accelerating that variant.
They said the capacity for testing for it is not available, but Yale is doing it through their public health.
Yeah, it'll be sentinel surveillance for quite a long time, just picking a random sample of positive samples and testing to see where it is in the state. It's going to take us a while to figure out.
Yeah.
Russ, you're involved with all of the school districts in the Chatham Health District in terms of their discussions about remote, you know, hybrid or wherever their status is. Is that right?
From, more or less, yes. I mean, I meet with all the superintendents. We've had a standing meeting on Tuesday evenings for, going back to July or August. So I meet with all the superintendents, and we're in contact all the time. So yes.
So where, just in terms of the other districts in the Chatham Health District, the school districts, where are, where does Portland sit in terms of, are other school systems full remote right now as well? Or are they hybrid, or is it really just a mixed bag?
Most, I'm trying to think carefully, most schools, I'm going to do everybody a favor. If you haven't seen, the state actually tracks this information across the entire state. There's a page on the state webpage, I'll see if I can post it in the chat, where you can see which school districts are in which learning models. I'll look for it after, you know, I'm done commenting, I'll post it in the chat before the end of the meeting if I can find it. Portland is basically very much the same about, as most districts are. Most are going back, most are going back full in-person for elementary school and hybrid in-person for middle and high school. That's very common across the state, actually. Doesn't mean it's right, just because most people are doing it that way. It just is what it is. And it's very common across the state, actually, with elementary going in-person. East Hattam is all in, with all grade levels. That's the only school district in Chatham Health District that is all in-person at all levels. And I think Ram Middle School and High School, they're both hybrid. Hebron Elementary Schools are all in-person. East Hampton Elementary is all in-person. Middle School and High School are hybrid. Winchester, it's all in-person, and K through six, or K through five, middle and high school are hybrid. That's, I think, across the district really standard, and that's most of what you see around the state right now.
That was my understanding as well. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you for all your hard work. I can't imagine being in your shoes at this point in time.
Question my life choices sometimes, Timothy.
I'll bet.
Russ, can I ask a quick question? I, back in November, we were hearing about the availability of rapid tests being made available to districts like ours from the state. And I know we haven't had an update on that in a couple of months. I'm wondering if that's something that will be available to us, if it's something that we could or should be using in a strategic way to help us with our reopening plans?
Me, I think it's the single greatest thing a school district could do to help manage their pandemic in their schools. But it is also tremendously administratively challenging. And testing is available to any school district that wants it right now. The state has purchased what's called the, it's an Abbott, Abbottors' platform called Binax Now. It's a rapid antigen test. It's a point-of-care test. You get results in fifteen minutes. You can get it, I believe, free from the state of Connecticut. I've got the person's contact information if you're interested. Here's the button. You want it in your school, like in your health office in your schools, need to get what's called a CLIA certificate of waiver, and that is not easy to get. So there's a pretty significant administrative hurdle you have to go through, jump over, get it. I don't know many school districts like Portland that have had the bandwidth to go through the process to make that happen. There are many or some school districts that have found a partner agency near the community, like an urgent care clinic, that can get access to this system through the state, through the state of Connecticut, prioritize school students and staff have symptoms, to send them to this clinic that day. So a student comes to your health office, says, I've got a headache and nasal congestion. You can have this partnership. They call that partner. They say, you know, Russ Melmet is experiencing symptoms. Can you fit him in? They prioritize a certain number of appointments. So that's kind of how it's worked for the school districts like Portland that have tried to take advantage of it. And it works pretty well. It just, again, takes building that partnership, having those agreements in place. Or if you want to get it in your actual school, getting that CLIA waiver and having a nurse who's dedicated to managing that system. And the system is not just getting CLIA waiver, but it's reporting to the state health department electronically anytime you have a positive or a negative result. Pretty burdensome from what I understand. It would be great if every school district had it. It's just, I want to paint the picture for how challenging it might be to make that happen.
Right. Charles, is that, is that something that we, that you're currently considering, whether we should be trying to work with the community health center or something like that to be able to send our students for rapid testing?
I've got to tell you, one of the, the Nineteen Divine Street testing location right across the bridge here has been remarkable. I've got, I've got to tell you, I've never heard anybody say they haven't gotten through and gotten their tests rapidly and gotten their results within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. You know, Russ, I'm not sure if you've gotten that feedback about them too. But in general, the Nineteen Divine Street, right across the bridge here, they're really pretty much spot on. That's where we've been sending everybody, and I've never heard a bad thing about them.
It's Nineteen Grand Street. That's okay. It's CHC. It's open from eight to, I think, eight to four, thirty to four every day of the week, except for the major holidays. Like they were closed on New Year's Day and Christmas Day. Otherwise, it's eight-thirty to four, Monday through Sunday. That's PCR testing, which is the more sensitive, specific test, but there is a lag. Depending on the demand around the holidays, it was like pushing two, three-day around time. It might be faster now, but they are very good. The point-of-care fifteen-minute tests for eating in the diagnosis of a symptomatic person at that moment is different, and this is why, because it can very quickly tell you, we need to tell these kids in school who are around this student not to come back tomorrow to get a test. So accelerates the timeline from exposure to quarantine quite a bit and can disrupt chains of transmission before they get going. That won't have a lag time, right? That's fifteen minutes, right, if you can get in to get the test? It's not, it's not determined on arbitrary capacity like CHC is, no, demand on those testing sites. But CHC is great. I mean, I don't want to say it's not great. It's great. And there's a difference between that and the point-of-care tests that you're talking about.
Can I just say, first of all, Russ, thank you so much for all the detailed information that absolutely helps with us to make our decision, and also, I think, for the community at large. So thank you. I can say I've been tested four times at the community health center. I would say the first time is the hardest, but I'd be lying. Every time, it's a little annoying. And just as a public service announcement, anybody who's interested in thinking about doing it, your results get much quicker if you set up a MyQuest account, which you can download the app on your phone. And my experience, you get those results back in about forty-eight hours.
That's been my experience. I've been tested by CHC twice, once through a drive-through. My wife went through the drive-through in Portland when we did that drive-through. That was also CHC. And then we're looking to schedule another one of those soon. Those are up-drive-through clinics, not the kind of regular thing that you can get across the river where to point care. They're very good.
They're good. I've done the CVS drive-through. I've had, I think I'm on my third or fourth test over the last few weeks, and it does come pretty quick. And you're right, Chris, the MyQuest account helps tremendously.
Eases it along.
So, Russ, I guess the other question that I would have is, again, looking at the trends, is the level of, is it any less safe for us to be in school now than it was in November when this surge kind of started?
Yes, there's more COVID-19. So, I mean, as I said, you're going to get more cases in the school when you have more cases in the community. And the same degree that you have more cases in the community, you'll see them in the school, and that's the degree to which it's less safe. You know, before this surge, it was pretty safe. I mean, it's like the term "safe," because anytime you have an exposure, there's a potential for transmission, right? We don't have transmission, but we didn't see a lot of transmission. So that's, that's the safe here, right? I want to focus very narrowly on not, we have cases and that they come into school, but what happens when you have a case in school? And what happens most of the time is you don't see transmission, but we don't see a secondary case. We've seen, those schools have been out now for about two or three weeks, depending, most parts of the state, the holidays. And we've seen a surge in cases. So, and I know it was the holidays, but what that tells me is that schools weren't significant contributors to community spread. There wasn't some undetected thing going on in schools that was driving what was going on, my perspective. Yes, there's uncertainty, because we're not screening every student and staff member in the school. The only way to tell The only way to tell, if you, you start testing everybody on a weekly basis, it's the only way to do outbreak detection. That's what I would surf, like if you test everybody, 25% of all the student body per week, so that over the course of the month, that's outbreak detection. We're not doing that. So, there's, that's uncertain, I don't want to say that we're certain that everything is fine. Uh, these indicators, when we do have cases, and all those people go out and quarantine and get tested and don't test positive, um, these indicators that we see what happens when schools go remote, don't see this huge dip in cases in the community, I, those are the indicators we have to tell us that schools seem to be not big drivers of the community outbreaks. Um, that verifies or supports what we've been finding in contact tracing, that what happens in the home and social settings is driving the community outbreaks. I, I want to say "safe," it, it's, uh, "safe" is staying at home and not going anywhere, including school or work or shopping. We know we can't do that, right? We would all die of starvation if we couldn't get food, and, and the water got shut off, and, you know, that's what a pandemic is, you know, not going to get to that point, so.
Maybe, maybe the question I should have asked, and I think you said earlier, is that the risk, although the numbers are higher, the risk of transmission in school is not as, it's only slightly higher, even though the numbers are not high?
The risk of seeing transmission occur in school is slightly higher, only because I expect to see more cases in school. Again, every time you see more cases, the likelihood of a rare event happening, it's not that likelihood of, not that that rare event is now more likely, it's less rare, it's just we're gonna see it more often. The risk of it happening in any one moment is the same, you're just gonna have more of those moments. And, um, but we, uh, that's.
I think that was the point, that, that the, um, in-school transmission, like you said, if somebody were to come in who had COVID, which you can't stop, because you can't control people outside, but the transmission in the classroom setting has been exceedingly low.
Yeah. That's what our indicators point to, is what contact tracing points to when we do it in the schools, and testing when you quarantine students. It's not never, it happens, it's happened in Portland.
Right, right.
I can probably tell you, you send everybody home, you're probably gonna see more transmission in those home and social settings. Everybody stays home, so, um, what, what's the, I, I, no easy answers here, I mean, I don't want to, I'm not trying to drive you to say you definitely should open and bring everybody back, or you should definitely send everybody remote. I'm just trying to tell you what our experience is, what the numbers tell us, and what you can expect based on our experiences.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that the trend right now, because of the holidays, and because people did not do the social distancing, and, um, all of the things that would be required to be safe, that we're going to see an increase in COVID, which is going to bring an increase in COVID into the schools, um, because the community has it. Um, and probably in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna see the after-effects as we did after Memorial Day, and Fourth of July, and Labor Day, and Halloween, and Thanksgiving, where there was a surge in COVID cases, and some of that did end up in the schools, and we did share it with kids and whatnot. So, really, the next couple of weeks sounds like it's very critical to, um, to staying, uh, you know, really mitigating and staying safe.
So if I could just, uh, add on to that, thank you, Meg, you know, another point, we get back to the point at hand here, is that by delaying the opening to full-time, especially with our elementary students, by another week or so, what we're doing is we're buying ourselves some time, I just got an update on that, teachers who are considered 1B recipients of the vaccine, in line to, uh, start receiving that vaccine within the, so that first shot, and actually, this is an interesting question for you, Russ. It's a two-dose vaccine, once that first vaccine, uh, is, is given, and I know this has been discussed a lot, that, that increases your, um, uh, decreases your risk for contraction, and it's something in the 70% range, and it's that second dose a couple of weeks later that bumps it up into the 90s. So maybe if you want to speak to the efficacy of sort of holding off until the vaccines get in the arms of our educators.
Uh, you'd be holding off for quite a while, I think, if you want to wait until everybody's gotten two doses of vaccine.
What about just for the one?
Yeah, I don't want to speak to the efficacy of one dose, because I'm not, uh, I haven't looked at the, I haven't looked at those numbers. I've only looked at the numbers on what it's like when you give the full, those, well, two doses. I, I do, I assume you're probably right, you do get, uh, confer some immune response that would make disease less likely, or severe disease less likely, at very least. But we're, we're talking quite a while before we get all teachers even one dose. I mean, let's assume for the moment that the first week of February, Phase 1B starts, and teachers are included in that list. I'm looking at how slow the rollout has been for Phase 1A, and how, how stuttering it's been. Um, we'll get better at doing it, just we're learning new systems and things like that, we'll get better and more efficient, just like with any new procedure. There are a lot of teachers, the state of Connecticut. And just in Portland, what is it, I mean, 200?
200 people. The governor said there were 800,000 people in the 1B category that would be starting, maybe get a vaccine in the next two to three weeks, starting to.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it's huge.
A lot, so, I mean, we were, we're probably talking before most or all teachers are offered two doses of the vaccine, we're talking well into March, and that's probably optimistic. I mean, you start the beginning of February, everybody's gotten their first dose even by the second week of February, and we're four weeks away from getting, starting the second doses. They're really long time from now, and realistically, we're talking April break, now before we get to the point where most teachers will have been offered two doses of the vaccine.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Russ, I mean, you answered a couple of my questions I had, but I just wanted to reemphasize one point, because Charles and I had talked about this, the fact that, to the best of our knowledge, we have had no transmissions within our schools. There's one case that, that's undetectable, it can't be confirmed yes or no, but over this whole time period, we have had none that we can pinpoint have been transmitted in our schools. So that's, and we know, we're all talking doom and gloom of high numbers, but within our schools, it's a safe place.
I can speak to at least one case of transmission in the schools that we're pretty sure was in the school. There was no other potential exposure that we documented, so while it's never certain, uh, you have close contact between two people, and one person had COVID, and then the other person gets it, they don't have any social interactions together, and they, that second person didn't have any other possible exposures. I'm pretty sure there was at least one, I can make it case transmission.
We, we thought about one, but still there's one. So, with, with a high transmission rate in our communities, being in school is a generalized statement, is probably the safest place to be. To me.
I think he said that already.
Yeah, I know, I'm just.
You send everybody home, and you're gonna see more.
And, yeah. Our experience over the holidays tells us that when people are home and they're socializing together, getting together with families, they're spreading it around. I don't know that going or staying remote is going to drive more of that, because it's not the holidays, right? We're still going to work and, and, and things like that after the holidays, so. Could have been a dynamic with holiday gatherings, a social event, it's different than regular work week, for example. So I don't want to say sending kids home is going to drive transmission, or a school would bring it down. I certainly don't want to, um, what I'm saying is, it doesn't look like bringing kids into school in person is what's driving the community transmission rates. That's a little bit different than what you're saying, so I want to make that point. It is not exactly the same as saying, if you send kids home, we'll see more COVID. That's not what I'm saying. Sending kids into school doesn't seem to be driving what's happening right now. I also want to say, on painting, while I'm trying to give you numbers and risk here, every person, what I found in doing all this work, is that every individual's comfort level, the same risk, is different. So, all I can do is communicate to you what the experience has been, what you can expect in terms of cases, um, what the risk is in terms of the numbers. Everybody's comfort level is going to be different with that same, yeah. And, you know, that's, that's the difficulty that everybody has in every conversation about schools, or workplaces, or, or anything like this, that one person's comfort level is very different than another person's. You can argue about it for weeks and weeks, and never come to a conclusion about what's right, because everybody has a different comfort level.
I just jump in here, apparently, we've, uh, reached the 100 people on this meet, and they're, um, shutting down the YouTube, um, feed right now because of the, um, Honor Society, um, program that's going to be going on. So we have some people that, um, are in the waiting room but can't get in at this point. So I just thought I'd let people know that.
There's, there's only, uh, we talked with, um, Ms. Lawson about that, there's only one live feed available, so this meeting will be recorded, um, and it's not going to be available on the, on the live stream going forward from now, because the National Honor Society induction ceremony is starting.
Right.
Nick, I'm gonna jump out, so you can at least have one more seat. So, yeah, we got at least one more.
So I'm just gonna post, if I can, the, um, the link to the, um, gonna work here, link to the learning models, uh, around the state in chat, anybody who wants to go to that, it's where the state tracks, um, the school districts are, you know, in which kind of learning models.
Oh, great.
They, they update that, I think, weekly, they issue weekly reports, there's a map, you can just hover over school districts, and they'll tell you which grade levels are in which learning models. It's updated pretty frequently, so, uh, if anybody wants to see what neighbors are doing, or people in different parts of the state.
I actually started to call some of the neighboring schools today, and I didn't get very far, so that's good to know, actually.
It's a much easier way, one-stop shop.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, this is great, thank you.
So I'll just, I'll jump on and, and point out what, you know, and I've heard, I've heard Russ, uh, be very, he's incredibly consistent, you know, through this, he's, he's always very clear. What, what, what I would go back to that Russ said, which, look, it, it's alarming, that, that I've got to say this, but we need to be completely honest. With high levels of community transmission, it is likely that we are going to have COVID-positive individuals who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic enter our schools. It, it is, it is really not even so much a question of, of if, it is likely a question of when and how often, right?
Right.
A, and, and for, for my point of view, as an administrative matter, when that happens, and large numbers of faculty and staff are quarantined, that means I need a large number of subs to, to come in, to fill in those, those spots. And as you know, subs are very precious and hard to find these days. But I will sell it, tell you that over the past three weeks, at, once the governor waived the requirement that subs hold bachelor's degrees, and, and I appealed to the community, we've generated that sub pool, and I, I will express my gratitude to Beth Solaris and ESS for helping us onboard and do the background checks, and we've got the training done this weekend, and we've got the people that are, 20 of them now, ready to come in and help us absorb that impact when inevitably someone comes in and, and certain numbers of our faculty and staff are, are subject to the quarantine period, right? That's the administrative hurdle that we had to get over, and, and I'm over it. Now, does that mean that if 21 teachers, or 22, or 25, or 30 teachers are quarantined, well then, I may not have enough subs, and we, we may be in a position where we're going back to remote, that's the reality. But we're ready to give it a try again, you know, we, we, we picked ourselves up, we've done the hard work, we've, we've built the sub pool, I've got 20 very fine people, I was delighted with the quality of the pool, and, and some of them are very young, in some, some cases, graduates of 2000, class of 2018, but, you know, they're, they're excited, they're ready to go, and, and we now have the capacity to absorb that impact of COVID-positive individuals who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic coming into the schools, and the contact tracers then identifying those faculty and staff and students who are, are then subject to the now-reduced quarantine periods. So with that said, th- those are the realities, you know, that, uh, uh, you know, co, all the, 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 the pieces are on the table, the, the, the numbers are there for us, that, uh, I think it's laid out for us, and, um, I, 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 unless anybody has any more questions for us, I, I, I'm prepared to make a, a recommendation about the instructional model that, that I, I believe at this point, we're administratively ready to get back into.
Charles, can I just throw one more thing out?
Of course.
Oh, since you brought up the, the variant, Meg, and it's been some talk, um, yeah, I just want to say, if that starts circulating, uh, and it's much more infectious, when we start seeing that in our communities, I think you're gonna have to make some tough decisions, because then the risk of that rare event becomes a less rare event, right? And somebody is much more contagious, and a rare event becomes less rare. And, um, we're ways away from that, you know, so I, I think I'm comfortable saying we're, you know, we're not at that point, we have to start thinking about that impacting schools, but, um, we will keep an eye on that, so I just want to, you know.
And I would add, Russ, that, um, you know, today, what the governor and, and the health department person said, that, um, really with this variant, the due diligence is going to be on the person who is positive, who is going to have to follow strictly the rules of quarantine.
Right.
I would suggest that our, um, website have, um, the detail of Addendum Phi, which was updated on January 4th, which details every possible scenario for what, what you're to do and what you're not to do, but the, the mitigation, hand washing, social distancing and masks, and, and also very strict quarantining, as, as much as you can. And I, you know, I know, I go out to the store once in a while, and I know people get together, kids play on, on sports and travel teams. You know, we have to be really, do our due diligence if we really want to see an end to this. Otherwise, it's gonna just be, uh, in school, out of school, in school, out of school, and I, I just don't know how many times we can, we can do this to families and, and to teachers and kids. I, I get it. So, um, I think we should post very specific what these regulations and things are, and do, people should guarantee that they're gonna try their darndest to, to follow the rules. And I think that's really the bottom line, we all have to do our, do our due diligence.
Absolutely.
And, and certainly, Russ, I, I would, you know, we, nobody has a crystal ball, but my, my, my hope and prayer, of course, is that before that, that new variant gets ramped up, we all have the shots in our arms, and the vaccine holds against it, right? I mean, that's, that's the, you know, hope that we all have, I think, is, is where we are. So, are, are you prepared for me to make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
Go for it.
All right, so my recommendation will be that we fully reopen Valley View Elementary School, Gildersleeve Elementary School, and Brownstone Intermediate School on Tuesday, January 19th, which is the day after the Martin Luther King Day, that we reopen Portland Middle School and Portland High School in the hybrid model on Tuesday, January 19th, the day after Martin Luther King Day, that Portland High School and Portland Middle School remain in the hybrid model until February 1st, Monday, which is a two-week period, which will give us the time necessary to observe and learn from the ongoing effect of high levels of community transmission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we support Dr. Britton's recommendation to fully reopen preschool through sixth grade on January 19th, and to put the middle school and high school in the hybrid model for two weeks at that time.
I can, I, I'd like to just clarify something, so that we, um, I had talked to Dr. Britton earlier, so I have a, um, a written statement, um, which I'll attribute to you, Lauren. Just, I want to add that all Portland schools will be open in full, for full-person learning, full-in-person learning on February 1st, unless otherwise indicated by the criteria outlined in the Portland School reopening plan, which would include all of the guidelines for opening and closing in hybrid. Does that make sense to everybody?
Can you say that again, I didn't, I didn't totally.
So, so basically, Lauren is saying, she, she recommends to the full board that she, that we support the recommendation of the superintendent as follows, Valley View, Gildersleeve, and Brownstone Intermediate will open in full-person learning on January 19th, with Portland Middle School and High School opening with the hybrid model. All Portland schools will be open for full-in-person learning on February 1st, 2021, unless otherwise indicated by the criteria outlined in the Portland School's reopening plan, which dictates that if we are under certain colors or whatever, that we would be opening or closing, or, um, going back to a hybrid model.
So that's just basically an amendment? So that's just basically an amendment to the motion, you're amending the motion?
No, I'm, I'm reading it so that we get the details in, because we want to make sure that.
Well, that's not the motion she made, though.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
It was a motion and it was seconded, so it would need to be amended or.
I didn't hear a second.
Well, I thought, maybe I misunderstood.
Let's consider it an amendment then.
Okay, so.
Is there a second to the amendment mo- amended motion?
I second the amended motion.
Okay, is there any other uh comments?
Yeah, I, I would just, you know, I, Charles, I understand administratively to, to, you know, jump through the necessary. Hoops and, and accomplish everything needed to go with the original recommendation of the eleventh, you know, would be impossible at this point. But I, I'm just saddened that, that that's where we are now, that now we have to push off to the nineteenth. And you know, saddened for the students and saddened for the parents, and I, I just feel that deserves being said. But um, I certainly understand where you are now, given Tuesday's events and that we need to, we need to come up with a proactive response.
The only, the only comment that I would add is, while we as the Board of Education sit here and, and have to. Consider and, and make these decisions, it's the community that's really making the decisions. And it's how well everyone in our community follows the guidelines and does what they need to do to make sure that our community transmission stays low. So um, we're partners in this, it's not just the Board of Ed and it's not just the school district, it's our entire community. That's gonna either um, get all our kids back in school or not, so, any other comments?
No, I'll just add that I'm, I'm grateful for you, Charles, for bringing back this compromise to us. I think that um, it's, it's critically important that we get our kids back in school. And also, um, I'm really glad that, that the board is able to, to honor the request of our teachers to help them feel maybe just a little bit safer. With after the post-holiday spike, coming back to school. Um, so I'm, I'm pleased with the compromise and I hope that um, yeah, I hope we can, that the board can support that.
I, I, I would just say, I think. The notion that, that the board acted to, in a way to support the teachers is just a misnomer, that, that's. We had a teacher who's the union president make comments, but I heard from many, many, many teachers that this simply wasn't the sentiment shared by the majority of teachers. So I, I just feel like that needs to be said, I just don't want to put this responsibility for the teachers, that, that, that these families and these students who are gonna lose out. On the opportunity of being in a classroom for another week is because the teachers asked us to not open up the schools. Uh, I just think that's, it's, it's not something we should continue to put out there as a board, that, that that's our, uh, that's our position. That's just at least how I feel about it.
I don't feel that we're, I don't feel that we're asking or letting the teachers or the parents or anybody drive this bus. I think we are looking at the safety and the health of everybody. And we're asking everybody in the community, teachers and kids and parents to come together and work together to be safe. Learning cannot take place if people don't feel safe, and you know, that's just a given. And I don't think, I, you know, Sue McDougal um spoke for her union and she obviously has had conversations. What other people say privately, um, you know, to, to board members. Um, I, I just don't think we're being pushed around by teachers or by parents. You know, if that were the case, we'd open school yesterday because we got a lot of angry emails from parents. I, I don't.
I don't understand what we.
And I think that our, I think that our responsibility is, is written in our policies to, to make sure that we can provide. At a, a quality education in a safe and uh healthy way. So um, I support the superintendent in this effort, I thank Dr. Melman, or Doc, I want to call you Dr. Russ to um, to inform us. I feel that the data that we have now and the information going forward makes this an informed, good decision. And um, I'll take the heat for um what I'm saying, but honestly, this is, I think this is a good decision and I think it's a healthy one.
I'm gonna move the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, that being the only uh matter of business on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Second, Lauren, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous also.
For those of you interested, there's still time to get over to the National Honor Society, so.
We can celebrate.
Um, all right, that's, that's a cool one to go see, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.